Judy Nelson, here. Tom Coon.
Here.
Emily Lee, here. Andrea Anderson. Erin Cavan.
Excuse me. Andrea Anderson, excuse me.
Thank you. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Lots of chairs. No space.
No space.
All right. Comments by visitors on anything on the agenda this evening?
I'm just, I am Gail O'Connor, school nurse on the move. When we get to the last day of school, I'm not sure if that's set in stone or something, but there will be public comment just out there.
This would be a chance to make a comment.
Okay, now let's just say that considering that Marshwood is done on June 12th and there's only a half of a day, that we consider having our last day on the 14th, whether we can do that by having enough hours in already or by switching and putting our PD day on 17th.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll move forward then. The consent calendar. Is there any, I'll take a motion for a removal of any items from the consent calendar?
I move that we remove the parent letter from the consent calendar and discuss it in non-public if necessary.
And there's a second from Emily. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I think so.
Second, the second from Emily. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Announcements. Superintendent.
All right, well, I will indeed start off with the last day of school. Right now, we, I thought we might have some iffy days earlier in the week with the snow showers, but as it presently stands, we've had one snow day and that puts our last day of school on June 17th, which just so happens to bump into a Monday. So whatever the board would like to do with that. The general assurances are in your packet. If you remember, a few years ago, these assurances would basically say that we will be responsible and spend all our federal assistance in an orderly manner. These were typically signed up by the superintendent of schools and make sure that it was adhered to. And last year, there was a change to not only have the superintendent sign on, but make the board aware of everything that they are, as well as having the chair of the board initially basically sign up as well. So that's in your packet and if it's acceptable, I will be looking for the board chair to do that this evening.
As an action item? Or, sorry, oh, right now, sorry.
Actually, they just need to be brought for the information to the board. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to handle that. If not, it's, we'd have to do those anyways.
Okay, so well, so along those lines, I think these general assurances being brought to the board each year are, it's probably a good idea that helps us realize partly the scope of the work that is being done at the supervisor union. I think that's important to know. And also, it just, it keeps us more aware of that work and also how they have to do all this work to keep the state and the feds happy for us and it's good for us to be aware of all of it, so. Any other discussion or questions or concerns about that? Thank you for bringing that forward to us, Bob.
We had that done today.
So that's the general assurances we've done.
And the other piece is, this is obviously a very busy time in the year, getting contracts done, getting nominations to the board, and getting prepared for all of our staff to be ready to go next year. So that's, we're all in the process of doing that, so that's all that matters.
It's a time of year. So we should probably have a discussion on the last day of school at this point. You know, essentially, a week is a week and this is how the calendar worked out, with our one snow day that ends up being a Monday. I know that, my personal viewpoint, and we can talk about that a little, is that, you know, I hate to lose, I hate to lose any of the time that is real, you know, that's meaningful instructional time, but what do other people think about that? And Bob, you seem to be enjoying the conversation. If this just happens to be the way it worked out, you know, if it was a Tuesday, we'd be giving up two days, if it was a Wednesday, at some point, I'd some point.
Your schedule is 177 student days, as it stands this year, which it limits us a little bit as to the contact time we have with kids. So I agree with Judy, I hate losing any kind of contact time in these days. There needs to be a last day of school at some point, somewhere. We've had a number of delayed openings this year that also lost some time in there. We do have a teacher workshop day. If we wanted some continuity, we could put the teacher workshop day on the 17th and utilize that day as a student day, if that provides a little more continuity for the students. But I would, I would, I would not recommend that we waive the student day.
When is the teacher workshop, as the development day is scheduled for now?
It's the Friday before Memorial Day weekend.
And parents are already aware that that's a non-student day?
It's on the calendar. Yeah, it's on our district calendar.
So, I mean, either way, the Black Lives Matter, on a Monday, parents may be taking kids out, or they may have planned a longer weekend on the Friday. I mean, switching, which was your point, Gail, I believe, right, is switching out for professional day?
Just postponing the day, part of the professional day.
Yeah, and having a student day leave up the original, original schedule, professional day.
From my perspective, as the principal who has to sort of plan those days, either day would be fine with me. What we have planned for that day can either happen that day or June 17th. So, you know, whatever the board wishes, we'll communicate with parents as soon as possible to let them know when the last day of school is.
So we haven't, so we wouldn't be losing any student time, if I'm hearing this correctly?
Not if we did swap.
If we do the switch. So, I mean, if that seems to work out better for staff and it seems so with where the staff have to bring it up, I, what do people think?
I think it's more productive to, you know, end at the end of the week, perhaps the last day, yeah. Having that Monday, it would just be, yeah, not be a very productive day, in my opinion.
It's also, we don't want to lose any more days.
So I'm hearing that the swap is already the board. If it works out well for the professional staff involved, so by consensus, you have our approval to make that swap.
Then that would make the last day of school for students on June 14th. And we will get information out to the parents that we're going to swap it with the, it's going to be a student day on the, maybe the professional development day. And then the PD day for staff would be on June 17th.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Okay. And now we're up to the principals' update.
I don't have a lot to speak about, but I feel like we were just here. But I did, I did give you a few updates in my report. A couple of things I just, I need some feedback on this time, rather than talking about things happening. The first is, Teacher Appreciation Week is coming, first week in May. So I'm aware that the board has done something to recognize teachers during that week and I just, you know, didn't know if you were going to reach out to me on your own or...
Apparently, we haven't yet, obviously. I added, I added to my agenda saying, oh, we forgot about Teachers Appreciation Day. Should have a discussion in April, but, and this is our last meeting, so I do have it under new business, but we can discuss it now. We generally, so we understand that there are sort of days set up and, you know, the SAU does something, PTO does something, people do something, and we've had, we've had a day in the past, I don't remember what it is, what day it is. Is it Wednesday?
It's usually the Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, wide open.
Wednesday's wide open, okay.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. We got Wednesday.
So is that all I need to know, that the board will be doing something to recognize?
Yes, yes. Probably reach out to me.
Okay.
But yes, we may plan, we will plan something for that Wednesday.
Great. I hope that you take that back.
We usually take what sort of is assigned to us.
That's what we've done in the past.
Thank you for, thank you for bringing it up, though. And I was, I had already written it down before I read your, yes, go ahead.
So the other thing that I'm looking for a little bit of direction on, we do our sixth grade ceremony to recognize our sixth graders before they leave RDS. So I'm trying to set a date for that. I've held off because we didn't know who we were going to have snow days, we didn't know when the last day of school should be, so now that we pretty much know those things, we're trying to set a date. Considering that the 14th would be our last day, we were looking at Thursday the 13th and then having the last day be the 14th where we do some different celebrations at the school on the last day of school. 13th is a regular scheduled school board meeting. So I don't know if that's happened in the past, I don't know how that works.
We've never had that happen in the past. I think because, I think because the last couple of years, we've had a lot more snow days and we've been later, we've been later in the season.
I kind of wonder.
So...
I'm just looking for a little feedback, I want to let parents know as soon as possible a date. I didn't know if that was amenable to the board and to change your meeting, or if you'd rather me select a different date.
Well, what other dates are, I'm starting to look, I'm going to look at the calendar here, what, is it usually done, like the second to last day of school? Again, I'm not, it really wasn't, I can't remember how it's been done in the past, we have some staff here, so.
It's been all over the place, actually.
It's usually, it's usually that week before.
But it's not always set to date before.
I'm free for Wednesday, if you change it, or, you know.
Well, it's, it's not just us who have to change, it also is from the SAU staff.
It almost feels like it's easier to change sixth graders.
Since it has a different schedule.
I'm okay with selecting another date, because we haven't put anything out to parents, I just didn't, I didn't know if there had been any prior practice or, you know, if there, you know, some districts are very key on tradition, so that's why I'm asking.
We can't remember the traditions. Maybe no one else will remember.
So if the specific date is not set in stone, then I'm comfortable somewhere.
Again, I'm looking at staff, because essentially, the board in the past has been informed as to when it's happening.
Okay. I will make sure.
Was there a reason why it wasn't on a Friday night?
Don't look at us. We didn't do it.
Well, when, after that, we have sixth grade recognition, the next morning, they go to breakfast at Fogory's. So it's always been that, the best.
And the awards ceremony during the day, they stand up for what they got the night before.
So it's not always the second to last day of school, but it's usually within a day or two.
Oh, I see.
So I'll, I'll work on it, find a day, that's a good idea.
And we're just going to say, and the new tradition starts.
It being flexible is better.
Well, and they have to work around everyone, other graduations, you know, like middle school, high school, all of that stuff, so if there was no set date, it just tries to be in that time.
And the board has never gotten involved in setting that, you know, we get our invitation. Thank you for checking this. Anything else, Rich, on that?
Nope, everything else is informational. Elliot will try to keep the board up to date, this is the time of year when a lot of the building projects and maintenance projects start to happen. Next week, Dick and his crew are going to focus on outdoor cleanup on the long winter and getting things screwed up on playgrounds for kids when they come back, cleaning, that type of stuff. But he's also already started trying to line up projects for the summer and he's finding it a little challenging to get people to call him back, so I will keep you up to date as we go along, just so that you know what's in process, what's been completed, that type of thing, as we go through the summer.
I was very happy to see the update on the invention convention and that we had a couple of folks there, and that was pretty, pretty neat, a fifth grader and a, and a first grader, right? That's pretty neat.
Yep, we had a huge number of students at our school invention convention this year, much bigger than it had been in the recent past, and there were a few that chose to, you know, go on to the state convention. We select the winners, you know, as it happens in the school, and then they're given the information if they want to go on their own to the state level and, you know, a few students and their parents did that on their own. It was an experience.
We get a nice smattering of information on this, it's very nice. Any other comments from you, Rich? Any board questions, Mr. Rich, or comments? All right, then. Discussion items, looks like we have Nick here, a few without this evening, but we want to keep it still.
So not a lot has happened since the 20th of May. We did have two standardized tests as juniors, the MEA testing, which is the main mandatory science testing. And we also had the SAT on Tuesday. That's a part of the everything day, so the freshmen get to do community service outside, the sophomores get to do college visits, kind of just be involved and see what that's like for the first time. Juniors are lucky enough to take the SAT, and seniors get a talk in auditorium about college and just a whole lot of the aspect of college. And also, quarter three officially ended, we're on to the last quarter of the year. Prom is kind of up, May 4th. There's a college fair on May 14th, which is run by the guidance office at the high school, where they invite a bunch of colleges to come set up many, like, stations, I guess, or tables, where they just give a little information about the school and hand out pamphlets to see if there's any students interested. And this year, we have over 40 schools coming. That's a good opportunity to just get involved with schools before senior year.
Is that by December?
May 14th. Next week is April break, which is exciting. I have some...
You could sound a little bit more excited.
That's exciting.
Well, I'm always sad to be late to school. Sports, I have a little update from Megan. Tomorrow, we have varsity tennis, a scrimmage against Scarborough. And Saturday, we have varsity baseball scrimmage versus Erskine Academy. Erskine Academy. I have a small update about the district musical idea that I've been talking about. I did send a follow-up email to Ms. West, and I heard back from her, she wanted to know again what the idea was, and I pretty much summed up my email from February, and I haven't heard back from her yet. About three days later, so I'm working on what I should do next to finally get that done, but hopefully next week. I keep saying next week.
Yes, and you were talking about working with the Marshwood board rep to...
Right, so we are working together, we're working together to set up a time where we can meet with our person, instead of trying to keep going back and forth. Clearly, that's not working out well.
Appreciate your persistence, however.
Sorry, no, I'm not giving up on this. And also, I saw on the agenda, there was something about a middle school represented.
That's one of your next discussions.
I guess I'll stay and maybe have some input in that.
Excellent.
Before I go. That's all.
All right, thank you, Nick. You answered my question, I'd written a question down. Tuesday, I just happened to be driving through town and I saw a Marshwood, um, said bus pull up and about eight young people got off the bus with an adult. And I said, wow, I wonder why Marshwood is sending a group of kids over here? And then I saw them picking up litter around town.
They were freshmen, yeah.
Neat, all, even town knew they were coming.
That's a really good question that I don't want to answer, this part of the town did not coordinate that.
Well, I just thought it wasn't that, and I had a doubt would ask you about it, you answered my question, so that already must have been a freshman.
Yes.
And they were out doing community service.
That's awesome.
That's really neat. You can, if you see anyone, just pass on, it's nice to see them walking around, please stop off and... All right. Thank you, Nick. So now we're going to go into a discussion of the Marshwood Middle School student, a discussion of that. It was brought, yeah, by, by, I believe, one of the board members about having a middle school rep, so we're, this is open to discussion now.
Yeah, I guess, I just, it's so nice to hear what's going on in high school and things that are coming up, like college fairs or musicals, concerts, et cetera. And I feel like we are a little bit missing out a little bit on things that happen at middle school that we don't have a similar representation for, so just in thought that we might want to hear from someone at the Marshwood Middle School as well, as to what kinds of things they're doing.
Definitely, I think that's a good idea. I know that, I don't have anyone specifically in mind, but I'm sure there'll be some interest. And I know that Megan and I can't cover everything on middle school, because we're not there every day. I feel like someone to represent their school would also be good, especially since we had the grades that were located there first, so I feel like they'll be more active in like the transition process and they can tell us how that's going.
Good points. Anyone else, anything on the discussion? Something to good idea? Then what would be our next step? Would, do we just, we send a little note over to the superintendent, asking for...
Yeah, I could get in touch, I could get in touch with the superintendent, and I would imagine that she in turn would get in touch with the middle school principal and, and there'll be somebody.
That'd be great, thank you. It was a great idea, Emily, and thanks for your input. As you know, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the week, and knowing you're busy, you're, you don't have.
All right, thank you.
Ben up for the job.
So the next discussion item is the Marshwood tuition contract discussion. The time has come, the list will be keeping, the buy, buy contract on July 1st, our contract will extend for the next six years, taking it out to the full 10 years. It'll happen automatically, but it seems like a good time to sort of get together with the Marshwood board, get together with them, we have to do it, we have to do it in May or June, I'll do it tomorrow. Or we could simply say, we want to have this discussion and while it's, or we know that the automatic renewal is going to take place, we'd like to discuss it and perhaps it, you know, changes or whatever, if you changes, if we have something to discuss with them. Anyway, have a discussion with them specifically about the contract.
So we have a window, is that correct?
Well...
During which we can propose changes, is that, or negotiate or whatever?
Well, it will automatically extend exactly the way it's written, on July 1st. But that would be a time to look at it, I think, to sort of review where it is and say, well, there's a few things that need tweaking. Every other year, we've had something about a foreign exchange student, maybe there's something we can talk with your board about, sort of an accommodation of a way maybe we run through, we could have a foreign exchange student, should we get that request again. There were other things on the list, and I don't remember any other. And the list is more...
Find my list.
It's not huge, I don't think, it was 50, it was a split of the parents, I think, we had a discussion about that at one point, like, has to be like... Oh, yeah, there were some questions, thank you very much. The activity late bus, I think we're not going to bring that up again unless we have to.
And then I added from last meeting about the CTC...
Yep, so things like that, and looking through the contract and seeing if there's anything else, it would be a time to think, all right, it's going to extend it now, out to the full 10-year initial period. It was essentially gave us a chance to have an out before the tenure was up. To let them get an out or let us get an out before that time was up. You know, it would be a time for us to sort of get together, see how everything's really working out, see how the boards feel, both things will work, how it's working out for both communities, and a time to maybe extend beyond if we wanted to, so. And again, I think, I think we could make it, as Erin and I did meet with the Marshwood chair, and it would also be a time, she even suggested, well, we could even just say, we want to have this meeting, but we're not going to have time to have it by July 1st, but we'll have it, you know, by August 1st. So this was just to keep that in front of us, probably need to schedule that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
All right, so shall we try to schedule it tonight, or do you want to wait till June and try to schedule it? We do, this is April, isn't it? I don't know where the year is going.
I mean, do we want to get some dates from the Marshwood board and then discuss it?
Or we throw that out?
Or do we want to make some dates and then throw it to them?
All right, well, what I will do is, I will drop a note, I'll keep Dr. Gudowski copyrighted as well, and the board just saying, you know, with that, we do want to meet, what kind of, you know, what we're...
We'll pick three dates and then we'll get back together.
They are, they are just in their budget season, their elections are in June, so... So they're kind of busy, so I'm thinking we probably add the elections is what makes sense, so, yeah. So we'll, we'll throw that out, I will, I will be in touch with the current chair so it stays on there. Okay. Next, Caroline's been sitting here so quietly waiting for all this, and next on our agenda is sort of the school-town collaboration. So Caroline, the floor is yours for the moment.
Thank you so much. Caroline Kendall, through the administrator. I'm here because you probably know that, I have a two-pronged, actually, approach to this discussion. You all are, I'm sure, very aware that the police are having a problem with their space and the select board is trying to evaluate what to do about that, and there was a proposal to build a new police station which would include a town hall. And that developed into a lot of public discussion regarding the town hall and whether or not we would want to build a facility to replace it, or, and how the town could evaluate that without knowing what the status of the building is as it stands. In terms of what it needs for renovation or... And in terms of what needs for renovation or improvements, what the costs would be, whether we did it all at once, whether we did it piecemeal, or whether or not it would make sense to do that at all. But to get a more comprehensive understanding of its status in that way would be really helpful. And so I'm here to talk to you all because you all are about five years ahead of us in this because you did a study on this building and proposed a renovation and then came back to the idea of, you know, doing some kind of major step-by-step, you know, one project or a few projects a year to sort of level up the funding approach to it but still maintain the building. So the town does not yet have an approach, but the first step is to have our building evaluated and know what its needs are and know what the cost of that, what the cost of those needs are. So I'm here to ask if there's a way that the school district could share with us, your facilities director, what the cost would be for that, if any. And here's where the two prongs come in. And one, the most immediate need is while the, while the select board is working on a new charge for the space needs committee to evaluate options for the police station, clearly the town hall is going to be part of that conversation. So, you know, until that committee gets up and running, in the meantime, we need to work on evaluating the building. And so could Mr. Fortier be helpful with that? Could we use him with that? And does he have the expertise we need? And by that, I'm wondering, did the school district not get a comprehensive engineering study before he employed a plan? Right. And so that may be the first approach that we need to take, honestly, but barring that, what is his level of expertise in terms of evaluating that, that building so that we can sort of determine whether or not that would be appropriate or getting the engineering study first? So that's the more immediate need. But the second prompt to this is we really don't have a facilities director. We don't have anybody who is assessing any of the town buildings and making sure that whatever they need for maintenance is happening and that it's on a schedule and that the major improvements are on the town capital investment plan. So each of the department heads is doing that to the best of their ability. We all know that the buildings will need a roof replaced at some point, but they're really not experts in that regard. So I have kind of a two-pronged question here about could we use him more immediately if that's appropriate in your mind or else, or in addition to? Could we use him in a more long-term cost-sharing way? I don't know if the board is aware that our janitor, Richard Pogarty, he's very skilled in what he does and he's a bit of a handyman and he does a good job at the town hall. He doesn't have this level of expertise that we're looking for, but he does fill in with the school as janitor here. And so he's on your payroll for that, but you're already recognizing his, his value in that way. So I don't know if he has more time availability or if you have other custodial staff who could maybe have more hours that could be paid for, you know, with compensation from the town or whether we're just compensating for part of Mr. Fortier's town at time, or if there's a way to work out some kind of arrangement in either of those ways.
Okay, so I hear that there are two things. One is specifically sort of town hall needs, and you're quite correct, and the other one is just general using Dick Fortier's expertise as a, as a...
In a more ongoing way.
Director in a more general way around town and things like that. So you're absolutely correct. The start to anything happening in this building was an engineering study, the IEB study, which is practically, it's etched in my brain.
Was that BAN, BAN wall or was that, that was a different...
No, that was I E, I E, I E A, right, thank you. I leave out a letter every time, I E A. And it was a comprehensive study that we paid somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 for, I believe. It was comprehensive, but it was every single major system. It was everything. It was, it was heating, it was ventilation, it was the kitchen, it was, it was everything except safety and security. It did not cover those for some reason, it didn't cover those. It did cover ADA compliance, it covered all of those things. And it was wonderful because we've been able to go back to it over and over and over again to see, and it gave us the length, the lifetime of the roof and how, or the lifetime of the furnace, or the lifetime of this or that, some of which were already way, way beyond their lifetime when they did the study. And that was, that, and that gave us a topic of one, so we found that to be very, very useful. Subsequent to that, as we looked into other things happening in this building, we had a number of engineers come through the building. And when we were talking about major renovations, we had, we had someone come through. When we went through becoming an historical, a natural historical site, another engineer came through. And of course, the nice thing about that was that every single one lined up saying, this is a very sound building. Whatever you do to this building will be worth it because it's a very sound building. It's not going to fall down in the next 20 years. It's, it's not going to fall down, is what they were saying. It is really sound. So, so we did do that first there. And then the other part about using, I do not know about Dick's actual expertise in being able to do any of that.
That would be the follow-up question because given that price tag, you know, I anticipate that wouldn't go over well, particularly not as a, you know, as an unbudgeted expense and that would just delay things. And given the magnitude of that expense, that there's a good chance that would not be supported by the voters, you know, so we're going to be like stuck.
Yeah. Now, in terms of, now, I don't know how often Dick refers to that study, but he has been, I mean, certainly he has and has grown his expertise in being able to look at. And the reason we have not yet replaced our boilers is because he has been able to initially determine what was wrong with some of them and fix it. He has done so much of that throughout the years he's been, five or so years he's been, I don't know if it's been quite that long.
So the boilers are now living beyond the life determined by the engineering study?
Oh, yes. They were, they were already beyond it and now they are, got even longer because he has been able to, to, to figure out what was wrong with them and fix them.
Excellent. Maybe I must have better do for that.
He worked with PSNA, now a resource, to get, to do lighting inside and outside. Just so many things that he's done. So he has that level of expertise in terms of looking at it. In terms of sharing him to do that, that's something that we would have to have a discussion with. We are lead on, on custodians and maintenance people. We run very lean. And that had, we moved to that position a couple of years ago. So Dick is also a full-time maintenance and custodian person.
So would it make sense, for discussion purposes, you know, in a, in a multi-year plan, not for today, would it be possible hypothetically to pay the school district a certain amount of money so he could be a full-time facilities director and not a custodian, which is part for the town and part for the school? And the money from the town for that purpose could be for more custodial staff, for the school to compensate for that?
Yeah, I think that would be interesting discussion to have. I think it's worth having a discussion. I sort of look now to...
Yeah, I think there's, there's other communities that have done hybrids like that. And I think sharing staff, obviously you have to look at the needs of these buildings. I think Judy's right, you know, to, to share at this point, if it's anything longer than a day or two, it would be very difficult for us to do because we don't have the coverage and we utilize him in a lot of different ways. So you bring up an interesting plan to, you know, subsidize some of our funding for an additional custodial position that may be shared both ways. That's an interesting idea.
I understand how you're, I'm sorry?
No, I was just going to ask, do you already have like an idea, some of the things you want to do now, sort of small projects?
Small projects our janitor can handle. And it's less about getting the projects done, which is by itself important, and I don't mean discount, but it's really more about the assessment and the planning and the evaluating of all the buildings, you know, just so that we can have what you all have, which is a building plan so that you know what your capital expenses are going to be, you can forecast, and you can attempt to be level funded in those, you know, year after year in those kinds of expenses and maintain your buildings appropriately so that we don't end up in a situation where you have to do a renovation because things just become so antiquated and need attention. So we can stay on top of things. So no, you know, but who knows what we don't know, I guess, is the point, because nobody working for the town would necessarily be aware of what we need unless we're tripping over it.
Well, I can just speak for myself. I mean, in the five years or so he's been here, I E's saved us thousands, countless thousands of dollars in things that we thought we needed to do or was able to rectify for much less, or able to do myself, you know? He's very skilled. He seems to really be, you know, letting us know if this is something we have to look out for, you know, really kind of looking down the, down the line to see what, what's coming. You know, has also given us, I think, other options. Remember, you were on, I think you were on the budget committee when you first brought on the idea of getting a facilities director. And it was, you know, we fought for that. And I think if the town had known at that time what a benefit it was, they would have been all in. But he's, I think he's done a terrific job keeping this, keeping the school, helping us to prolong the life of it, I suppose. And with the lights, everything were changed so they were more, you know, energy efficient, little things like that that we wouldn't have been worried about. And the boilers too, that was, I think we were really worried about that, talking about that for a long time. And problem solved, so, you know.
I got the benefit of a, of a tour of the building with him and he was telling me about the things he's accomplished. And in the kitchen, for example, and the town hall has, the tile, the floor tiles are coming up, not just in the police station, but upstairs in some areas that have, get a lot of snow melt on the feet, the high-traffic areas has degraded the glue and the tiles are falling up. But he chose a completely different tile here than, than the kind of tile in the old building, which is more like what we have at town hall. And so maybe the new kind of tile you all have here in the annex would be more appropriate. But we don't have somebody who thinks in those ways, who could give us perhaps more appropriate options. We would have no reason to think to do anything other than what's already there. So we want to be able to make better choices for the town if indeed the town hall is to stay, but we need to be able to answer the question for the people, does it make sense to maintain and renovate the town hall or to build a completely new facility? So.
Well, I think that obviously the next, I'm not exactly sure what the next step is, but I think it is maybe getting a sense from Dick, what he feels his, you know, from, from the people who work for him directly as a principal, if he has any bandwidth at all. And then talking with him about what doing an assessment of a building would take, you know, how much time it would take and then seeing if it's even something that we can pursue. Is that what it is?
Well, I just, I hate to overextend the employee adding, adding something else to the play. I find it an intriguing idea for the next budget cycle to add another shared custodial position that might relieve some of that day-to-day pressure that at that point in time he would have some, some dedicated time built into the schedule for just what he's talking about. And then in the heavy traffic times, that could, that custodial position could swing whether to the school more often or to the town more often depending on what's going on. So I find that kind of an intriguing position, but I think it would probably have to go through the next budget cycle.
Which is fair, and I would anticipate that. And likewise, the select board would have to evaluate whatever that proposal is and the cost and, and consider that amongst all the other priorities and so forth. The other option, if he's already stretched thin, if this is workable for your board, is if, if Dick felt as though he was qualified to do this and willing, if he could let your board know how long he thinks it would take to do just the town hall, to, to evaluate that if it's, if it's a two-day project, for example, would it be helpful if we were able to offer our custodians help if indeed he's free and can do that and on our payroll for, for that same amount of time or an extra day? I mean, their pay rates are obviously going to be different. But is, is there a way that we can sort of alleviate the burden of the loss of his time to the school district so that we could borrow him for a one-time short period of time for that purpose?
I think the first discussion might be with Rich and Dick and basically asking Dick if that's something that he felt comfortable. I don't even know whether that he feels comfortable to do that or whether he feels like he has the expertise to do that, I have no idea.
Agree. I just want to make sure that, you know, because time is really important on the town side so that we can propose something new to the voters, we hope, in March, that we keep the discussion moving so that we can think about all the, all the options all at once so that it's not a, you know, month-long conversation if we can avoid that.
Well, I think that what we could do if it's acceptable with board, I'd be glad to meet with Rich and Dick and have a conversation about whether it's even feasible or possible or whether he felt comfortable in it. And then if the answer to that is yes, then we could contact you and see if we could spring a day or whatever might, you know, be available.
Thank you. That'd be great.
I think that's acceptable. It goes to one of our goals of seeing what we can do to help the town and the town does a lot for us. But I think we need to keep it very specific that it would be essentially assessing the town hall, right?
For sure, for this one-time thing, absolutely.
For this one-time thing, see how he feels about doing that. But you'd be able to tie it on the end.
And then the other prompt could be another separate conversation closer to budget time, another...
Budget season just starts so soon.
I thought it could be a month or two anyway.
Continue, as we know.
It is.
All right, so that's, so, so, so the next, next thing that will happen is that you and Rich and Dick will talk at some point, sometime in the next, before our May meeting, get an update on it.
I hope so.
Let me be, let me be clearer. Only because I know, I know, I know how these things go, get, go off and go back. It can be another month, we only get once a month, so sort of keep that going. All right, is there anything else you want to come up with? All right, well, thank you. We appreciate very much your coming forward, so we'll see where we stay.
Well, I appreciate that the board is considering this, so thank you. It's new territory for us both.
Well, it is, and, and to Dr. Gudowski's, we certainly, he is stretched. He is a full-time custodian and a full-time facilities person. So he's, he does a lot, so we don't want to overstretch him.
We appreciate that, yes.
So thank you for that, too. All right, moving on. A budget update.
Hopefully in a couple of weeks. It's our last update. It's not last, it's happened, except that we have started encumbering the additional months that were included at the last meeting. So as of this reform, we encumbered about half. And I know today I was approving some more for the others, so that's continuing to happen. And I'll be on the other side two weeks ago.
And some of that, that encumbering is happening in the PR and upkeep of equipment line, right?
Yes.
That's sort of what I saw, so I'll see. Any questions for Katie on the budget? Also, since our, since our last meeting, there was a budget committee meeting. I hate to throw this at you, Erin, because you stood in for our rep, but was there any update you wanted to do with on the budget committee meeting?
It was largely an organizational meeting just to elect a chair, which is John Wardway for another year. And Suzanne Hubert was elected vice chair. And there is one open seat on the budget committee, so they have put out feelers for letters of interest for people who might want to fill that position. And then the budget committee is meeting with all those folks on the 24th. And then the budget committee is meeting with all those folks on the 24th to interview them and to appoint that vacant seat. And I think that was about.
About 24th of April?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is the front step quote.
The, we don't have one. We've been marking on quotes, getting, not only quotes for the cupola to get that work scheduled for the summer and front steps to get that done sooner than that. It's been very difficult. I've talked to Rich and Dick, and Dick's working hard to get those quotes in, but the way the workforce is going now and people are right out straight, it's very difficult to get those. So we don't have one at this point. I guess I would ask the board what you, remember, we were talking about doing the front steps out of this year's budget, which means we literally need to work on them before July 1st. So at the very earliest, we did bring you a quote would be next meeting in May if we can get it returned by then, which means that we would have to get commitment for somebody to do work in June, end of June. I guess I just want to put that on your radar because when it comes to the next meeting, if we're going to move forward with that particular piece, we'll have to do it rapidly.
It's good to know that. I mean, it would be nice, of course, to have more than one quote, but we're also understanding that it's very difficult getting any quotes, it sounds like.
I can give you a little update. I did talk with Dr. Getoski today, and Dick had somebody come in today to look at the steps and do an assessment, and would get quotes of Dick next week. But he does have two other people that he's called. I think one of them is scheduled to come in next week to look at it and give a quote, and hasn't heard back from the third one. So he is looking at.
So it sounds like we might have a couple.
At least one, hopefully at least two, possibly three.
I think we have a ballpark figure somewhere on that. Anyway, we'll just have to see how quickly that goes. I think we're all aware that time is of the essence on that, so, thank you. All right. Moving on, the school board retreat discussion is basically on here just so that we determine, so that we talk about when we might want to have it. So this last, we had a retreat after Dr. Getoski was hired, so that we could do it with him, and it was done in the summer, which set, and basically the goals are not for a board year, which goes from March to March, because that's when the elections are, but for the school year. So summer is a good time to do it, if that works for people. And then again, we can keep moving tonight, because we won't have to do anything tonight. But what do other people think about, we've done it, we've done it.
We'll work out some days, we'll figure out.
Okay, but we'll aim towards a summer conference. All right, good. Excuse me, let me make this note that I'll write to the chair later. All right, the next is the first reading of the policies, the student conduct, JIC student conduct and JICT student conduct, discipline and due process. These are the last two policies, I think, of this policy round. The first one is recommended, the second one is required by law. So first of all, so questions, comments, concerns about either of those on the first reading?
Should we tell the board on the second one if it's required?
And, yeah, we pretty much, as a board, have always adopted the recommended and the required. But this is the first reading, we will take that vote actually next month, or we'll actually wait and take that vote next month.
We can put them on for second reading next month.
I did, I did start kind of like the spelling out that the board will see the student handbooks. I wasn't sure, because I know that I have never seen a student handbook, so in one of the, in the JIC, it's noted that the board will see the student handbooks. So I think that's very nice. You all may have seen them because you're parents. So as a non-parent board, though, I have no sense, I'm sorry. All right. And now I had added to the new business, teacher appreciation. So I know in the past we've done a number of things, we've done cupcakes, we've done, I don't know, some, there were the looms, there were all sorts of things. So I think we should authorize the, Andrea Emily, can you handle it? You've been doing it for a few years.
It's a book that I have to say.
Well, because she's not here tonight. Congratulations. What do you want to do? What do you want to report to you? So by consensus, the board will just authorize you all to move forward with that?
We'll make sure to share a plan with you before we go through with that, so.
All right, and I, depending on the day. Be around to help if necessary, keep home also. Great. All right, we are now up to appointing the withdrawal committee. So the first thing we need to do is appoint the school board members, and then we'll go forward as a board. And it's nice to see, I see quite a few people, I believe, because there are a lot of faces, I'm not used to seeing here, Terrence, who are here, that's really nice. We had a remarkable, a really remarkable response, and we were a little bit overwhelmed by it. In a very good way. It was really heartening to get the responses we got, and everyone, everyone who responded brings something to the table. So we'll move forward first by appointing the school board members. We'll try to go through, we went through part of the process last time and then realized we didn't want to, it was too early to appoint, so we're going to appoint tonight. So the school board members first.
Nominate. Yeah, they have to do nominations, right?
It's an, I believe it's an appointment from the board chair.
It's an appointment from the board chair, so this is awkward. I am appointing myself, and I'm also appointing Erin Dallow. So Erin and I, Erin and Dick, Erin and I will be the school board reps on the withdrawal committee. And now we go into, into appointing four members. So I don't know, I did four, four members, four community members. And again, I can't say really just how wonderful it was to get everybody responding. We had 11 people, I think, in total responded, eight or nine sent the follow-up bio, it was just fantastic, really, it's just amazing. And whether or not you get appointed tonight, we hope everyone who's replied will absolutely stay involved. All the meetings will be public, there'll be time for comment and talking with the actual committee, so we can only take four, by law, we can only take four, otherwise we'd take you all. So we had a bit of an idea that it's turned to make it as completely objective as possible, that we would simply take the first four who replied and sent in bios, the follow-up on it. That was one of the things I was thinking about, are there other thoughts about how we might go about, I mean, we can go about this in many different ways, but, other thoughts from folks on how we might go about it? That's.
Really, I mean, we get, yeah, also, I know, I understand that, that way of looking at it. I also appreciate that one person that wrote in has some experience with this situation before, and I don't believe it's one of the first four, I'm understanding my definition now. So I, I think that would be valuable input. Not sure that I want to be quite so objective.
Thoughts, some thoughts?
The first four. I'd say first, first two, the first four. We are, you said, we are 11?
Yes, and I think that it's fair to do the ones that also did the follow-up, sort of, because, because a little bit of time passed in between there, and some of the folks then got a little more understanding of how much time it would take. Erin was very good about communicating with people and saying how much time it would take and those kinds of things. And when we didn't hear back from them, I think we sort of, we can sort of take that as a, you know, I didn't send a bio, so, so that's, that's that. So it's certainly the ones we got the bios from. And I think we want to make sure, and the first four do, but we can talk about it a little bit more, are people who, that make sure we're covering a broad range of the community. We don't want them all to be parents of our CH students necessarily, we want a range on that.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I do think that having a good understanding of the school and needs of the school is very important.
I mean, I agree. I mean, I'm looking for someone who's going to be practical, who comes in with no preconceived notions or ideas of what's best to happen, because we're going to have a broad range of things in front of us, and it'll start to narrow down. And someone who is collegial and can work well with others as we go forward, so those are the attributes I'm looking for. Any special attributes for anyone else?
So nice to have two, are people, you know, with business experience, experience with budgeting and planning and those sort of things, and that's the attributes that you listed, as well as that I sort of felt like we captured those in the first four, and then it was also convenient that they were the first four, so that was, I felt like it was easier to make the decision, because really, everybody was fantastic, and if we could just accept the four nine, then it would be good. So it's a really difficult decision, though, you know, some sort of complicated spreadsheet matrix checkbox thing to, to narrow down. I think that's the easy, easy way out. There's certainly no one on there, but I think I would not mind.
Right, so you can see what our problem is. We want you all, and we're not, we can't choose you all, the law doesn't allow us to choose you all, to appoint you all. So let's list, I'm going to list the first four people, and then we'll, so that would be, I'm making sure I have them there, yep, Shelley Levy, Jennifer Lenz, Brian Collarin, and Caitlin, oh, foot, foot, foot. And, so those are the first four.
Could you read them one more time?
We would love to have every, seriously, I can't say enough how much we would love to have everybody.
If you're here, and just don't want to be hard, but yes, yes, please, join us.
Yeah, and again, the meetings will be public, they will be, comment will be welcome, and we'll go forward with that. So are those four, are those four here tonight, all four here tonight? One, two, three, you are? Okay, I don't know, I don't know everybody, he's not here. Shelley, is there a Shelley Levy in there?
Shelley Levy is not.
You're all willing to serve still? The three there are here?
Yes.
All right, we'll be attentive to Shelley. Should anyone, should Shelley not be willing, willing to serve now that she's been, if we're going to go ahead with them, which we are, we'll let other folks know. I can't, I will say this like 500 times in the next three minutes if I can, I hope that all of you will stay involved. People who are new in town, like Mike, who I met at a couple of meetings, and I was very happy to see his name come to, I would love to see you stay involved and hopefully make it to some of the meetings, because we do now have your email address, and you will be personally invited to come to, definitely to attend the meetings and bring comment to us. All right, do you need an official motion to appoint them?
Are you going to do the budget committee member as well?
Oh, and the budget, yes, I'm sorry, the budget committee member has been named, and it's Joe Dash.
Thank you all very much.
Oh, can't thank you enough. It was truly overwhelming, I mean, in such a wonderful way, that people really stepped up to come do this. And as many of you noted, this is a very important decision that we have to make, what is going to be best for us going forward? And how, we are, we are in this position because Summersworth took the first step, and we then sought legal counsel who said, really, for Rollins, to make sure you're doing us best for Rollins, you two should start a withdrawal committee. So that's why we're doing this. And here we are, and we're going to move forward, and with everyone's help, we will, hopefully, this committee will come up with a really good plan to save us a little future. So thank you very much. Don't you have anything for?
No, is there any more?
Thank you all, and thank you, Erin, for a lot of the.
Very much.
And the last old business item is just about the sixth grade student discussion. Just want to make sure that everybody's fully aware that we are still keeping that, but we are, we are looking forward to having a forum, to building a forum for probably later in the summer, early in the fall, so that we can have a public forum, hear from experts, just sort of start looking at that as the Warren article asked us to do. And we have, we did double-check with the attorney, and it is definitely advisory, partly because, you know, look into this, but there was no money given to do it, so, I mean, so that's another reason why it'd be even more advisory, so to speak. So we checked with the attorney, but we're going forward anyway to do the research on, get some of the research on that done. All right. We have an action item. Earlier this evening, we talked about nomination of staff, so I will take a motion, I don't have it in front of me, to accept the nomination of staff as presented to us earlier.
And move to accept the nomination of staff as presented.
Sorry, the second, all in favor, seeing as what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
So that's number one. Future meetings, May 9th is our next school board meeting, June 13th is our, is the one after that. We also, on May 6th, we have an SAU board meeting, and Tom, at which point Tom will be replaced as chair. He's counting the days. April vacation starts next week, so you can see the dates in there. All right, any other events that need to be mentioned? Posing comments by visitors?
So you have four points to watch each.
So, you're the people, for instance, Washington City. Will the sixth graders' transition be part of your contract negotiations? Is that on the list?
I'm not sure what that means.
Like, the talking to marshals, see what they need, if we were to do that in the next several years. I mean, they need lead time, so I understand, we're just looking at it now, but would you consider having a conversation with them to figure out, how much lead time do they need, what, how does that affect our contract agreement, how does that affect busing, all the things that go into that? Because as an informed voter, I'd like to know, how much is that going to raise our overall school budget? How much is it going to affect the services that are provided to the kids here?
Good point. I've added to the list, and just to make it clear to everyone, it's already in the contract that we can send our sixth graders at any point in time, once we, but your point about was the lead time kind of thing, will take. Any other comments by visitors? All right, well, thank you all very much for coming. Thank you for, again, all the people who are here who responded to, and wanted to be part of the withdrawal committee, we hope to go all day, and the four that have been appointed this week. Thank you very much.